Okay, thank you very much, and I would like to speak loudly over here, but it won't get recorded as we don't use a microphone, so we'll talk here, and we've got one that we can carry around. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming, and I wanted to give a couple of preliminary announcements. One is the reason that we find ourselves here is because we would have used the Osborne Room, but we have in the past, but on Wednesdays, the day that we could get a forum here, the Osborne Room is having an administrative court, and we did not want to try to move that. The second thing is that we wanted to use four screens here, which is why City Hall doesn't work so well. And what we're trying to do is answer some questions that the city council has asked me and Finance before, and that is, how can we take a look at the budget, the big picture, all at one time, early on? And so what Patty Lynn and I are going to do is we're going to try to show you that. And the reason we've got four screens is because then you get to look at the whole thing at one time, and Mr. Black is just arriving here.
We can start.
Oh, so we can start.
Actually, let the record show that we have Oldham and Gray and Black, the two Bs, have joined us.
Sorry.
No, no problem. I would just, for your benefit, say again, one of the reasons that we were doing this now is because I've been asked by the council to be able to show the whole budget at one time from a high level, early on, and we're going to try to do that. And we only have four slides for you, and we'll give you a copy of each one of those so you can write on them, and that'll take us about 30 minutes, and then we will open it up for questions. Patty, why don't you go ahead and pass out that first slide for him? And what I wanted to say right up front is that the good news is you don't have to make any decisions today. You can just kind of play around with it. The bad news is, in January, you'll have to make some hard decisions, but we're going to give you all the pieces today, so you can just take a look at them, and you'll see what you're going to have to deal with. We, of course, can drill this down to very fine detail, but right now, we wanted to get everybody the big picture of what you're up against. Okay, so let's have that first slide up there. And what I've done is I've put it over on this side because we're going to go across, and you'll see them all appear as they come up. Okay, is this on? Great. Okay, the first thing we've done is we're answering a question about the capital improvement plan, and what happens is, if you look at the capital improvement plan, the five-year plan, it goes out for five more years, and you can take those things and add them up. The total capital improvement plan for five years, or for the unfunded capital improvement plans for the future, is, I think, $450 million or in some echelons above reality. But what we've done, as we bring that down to five years, you come down to the projects that, at least in the near future, you might be able to do. So for this next year's budget, we've taken what would be about two years, maybe this year and this year, and we've put down there the ones that we've identified as high priority items. This is for demonstration only, you can see that up at the top, and we're not proposing that we do these, but for purposes of discussion, we wanted to put some of those out so you could see what they look like. And anytime you want, you could take one of those off of there very easily. And so, for example, if we said we wanted to take the Fire Station 5 off of that, Scott, take that off of there. Okay, and now the bottom changes, so you know what you've got. Okay, let's put a backup on there. So this is kind of the interactive budget game. So what we've done is we've taken and we've put this number of items up here, just so you can see what that looks like. And you can take some off, or you can put some more on, but we've put ones up there that have been identified in discussions for a long period of time that are high priority items. Now, when you look at that, that comes down to $74 million. $74 million, of course, we don't have, but what happens is, if you fund this over 20 years by borrowing the money, by bonding for it, what you see is the amount of money that you have to pay each year is $6 million. Now, that's a number that's kind of doable, but of course, what Patty Lynn will remind you is you can only do that once, and that is, if you spend that money for these items now, you can't come around next year and do it again. If you want to do another project next year, you have to have a new source of revenue. It's like buying a house. You can buy that house once, but you've got to pay for it for 30 years. You can't buy a new house every year on the same amount of money. So then, where does that money come from? Because right now, we don't have $6 million, much less $74 million. So now, we're going to put the next slide up here. And what the next slide is going to do is going to show you those sources of revenue. Now, some of you are going to right away say, "Oh, no, we're not going to do that." And that's true, because we put up here an increase in property tax. You could get $1.3 million out of that if you would like to, but we said we're not going to do that. But you could do it next year, I'm putting it up there as an option, because if you add each of those different items there, property tax, home world sales tax, motor fuel tax, utility tax, you can come up with enough money in one year to fund a number of these projects. The problem is, if you don't want to get one of these sources of new revenue, then you're going to have to take some of these projects off of your wish list. So Patty, if you'd pass out that second piece of paper then. And then what you're going to do, and I can see your minds are doing this, you're taking your first piece of paper, and you're taking your second piece of paper, and you're drawing some arrows between them, because what happens is, how then could you balance some of those things out? Okay? So now, we're going to take a look at Exhibit 2 here, and let's put the slide behind that. So there, we put those two charts together, and we drew some arrows. So, for example, if you might think about four cents on the motor fuel tax up here, well, you could fund a number of your projects over on the other side. And I'd point out some things that are kind of interesting, like over there in that second to the bottom line is Brick Street, which we have in the unfunded category. So how are we going to fund that Brick Street project that we looked at for next year? Somewhere, we're going to have to find a source of income, and maybe one of the things you can do is you can look to some portion of motor fuel tax to pay for that. Now, what happens is, as you think about this over Christmas, you can come back and see what our appetite is for capital improvement programs versus what our appetite is for new sources of revenue. Because unfortunately, right now, we don't have the money in the budget to anticipate paying for any of these projects without getting some new source of revenue. And if anybody has any questions on that, I'm free to handle that right now. And then we'll go to the next slide here. Okay? Yes, there's a question.
Is it okay to just ask questions about the first slide, the capital needs?
Yes.
Where will we find the list of the things that did not make this list?
Oh, sure. In the five-year capital improvement plan, which has been passed out to you before, they're all on there.
Yeah, okay. So you pulled it out of that?
Yeah, we just extracted some for purposes of demonstration. We would ask you to go back over Christmas, and you can take some of these and maybe put some new ones in that you think would be important, and we can take some out that we may find here don't make the list.
And then on the second chart, just for our, I'm interested in knowing the potential funding sources. What is that estimate based on? Is that a very conservative estimate? Is it over a range of years? For example, motor fuel tax?
Okay, good. I'll ask Patty to answer where you came up with that.
Those estimates are pretty good, and they're annual estimates, so that would be recurring revenue.
Over a period of years.
Once you raise it, it will keep coming.
In terms of consumption?
Yes, I mean, we trend that. We track our function.
Okay, Mr. Wondle?
Thank you. So I'm looking at Exhibit 1, economic development, land acquisition, and I wanted to know, is that related to the other items such as, I don't know, like center O'Neill for expansion, or is it a totally different thing? So could you expand, tell us what that entails?
Sure. Sometimes that is projects that we happen to be doing in the future, and we would like to look at some of those that we can get now. For example, Fire Station Number 5, and I would point out, Fire Station Number 5 is a proposed fire station in the Northeast. The facility that is in the Southwest, we're calling the Public Safety Training Facility now, to differentiate it from this one, but yes, we're looking at some land now, and somewhere to do that kind of stuff, we're going to have to have some money to put into that. And that's one example of it. But that number, where we talk about land acquisition, that number can come down based upon what items we want to build. So it could well not be $5 million if we maybe only have $1 million worth of property. Patty?
I'd just like to add that I took some liberties here. I've heard a lot of the public discussion, and I just put a spattering of things up there. Some things that have clearly been mentioned, but economic development and downtown improvements, I just kind of threw some budget in there for those, so it's really anybody's game. And because we're just discussing, I thought, oh, why not, you know, have some fun?
And also, these numbers are very general in nature. For example, if you look over here, Aquatic Center and O'Neill Pool, we know that that doesn't have much time left, a year? I don't know if we can open it up this summer. So what is $10 million? We haven't designed it. We haven't created a bit-sized package, so how do we know that? Well, we asked our subject expert, and I'll go back there. Jay, how much is a new aquatic school center going to cost us about?
With the park renovations and O'Neill and the rest under, it's just under $10 million.
So that's how we get those numbers, okay? But they're for discussion purposes. Yes, sir?
So Steve, if, or I guess Patty, either one, if we had questions about a little bit more with detail level, we could just reach out to you, Patty, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then what we'll do is, based upon your reaching out to us and getting this, when we come back in January, we will come back with a general budget that will show you kind of how these things go together, based upon the input we've got. And then we'll be asking for you to kind of raise your hand and give us an up or a down on these things. Scott, I'm sorry, Mr. Black?
That's all right. Thank you. So I guess I have two questions. Number one, with the home world sales tax piece, that's a quarter percent increase from where we are right now. So now that I have any faith that this is happening, what if the federal government were to pass a Marketplace Fairness Act? Would that generate the difference in revenue for us at that point in time?
We'd have to look at that, but that would be positive stuff.
Okay. And my piece number two is the Aquatic Center for O'Neill. Would that $10 million be a waifu or just a regular?
A waifu is part of that.
Waifu is part of that, good, because that generates revenue, because you have people going to our historic core that are buying lunch and having a great time in our wonderful facility. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, maybe we could put a concession stand there.
This is just the cost side of the budget.
Yes. Okay, now, I want to take a look at another piece of this that is, is one that we talked about, and Scott, if you could give me the next slide over there. Now, this was what we have as the deficit. You've heard us talk about a deficit of $1.5 million to $3 million or so. So we've gone back to each of the departments, and we've lumped Administration together there, but you look at that, and that's how we get that $2.9 million deficit. That's the number we're looking at. Now, a lot of these, yes, thank you very much for asking.
I didn't get that out yet, but did you?
And I'm giving them to you in that order so you can stack them up side by side and look at them the same way. And by the way, the council members that are missing here, and we're going to have a makeup on this for tomorrow at 12 o'clock in the legal conference room for the council members that were missing. Diana Howman has already departed on vacation. We gave it to her yesterday. We got to practice on her, and then the other two members will do tomorrow at noon, so if anyone would like input there or have another look at it, we'd be glad to have you take a look at that. Okay, now, what happens in this $2.9 million, a lot of that is compensation. And I say it's compensation, we've had discussions of this before, it came up at the Mayor's Town Hall meeting downstairs last week. How much of that is compensation? Well, a lot of it is compensation, and I'll show you one of those that is the most significant. If you look up at the police, you see that the police has a $1.12 million deficit there. Well, why is that? Well, it's because we've got a lot of police officers, and when you give a pay raise to each one, it builds up, and the same thing with the other large departments. So what happens is, a large percentage of that is taken up in things that we have already committed to in terms of union contracts and that sort of thing. We have many thousands of dollars in the police department put towards body camera equipment, for example, and we put a couple of those in there that we just think have to stay in there. Of course, as we begin to look at it in more detail, we may, these numbers may be refined a little bit, and I'll give you an example of how some of those things could be refined as we get closer. We did just last night, put $375,000 to the arena, okay? Well, that kind of comes out of fund balance now, but also, we only did one-third of the amount of money for the economic development, so there's about another $200,000 there that might go back into the fund balance. So some of those things are going to balance themselves out as we get closer and closer. So when we come back to January, we'll get a finer and finer degree of discrimination on each of those. But those are the numbers that we're looking at about now, and that's really the gap that we have to close. Now, I come back to when we had the retreat in November, and having a military background, I don't like using the word retreat. I like to say we're moving forward. When we had our attack on the Fourth, we came up with these things, so give me the next slide. Okay, Scott, and you can pass those out if you would please as well, too. Okay, and what happens here is we have a little bit of a, I think they rest on this a little while, but let me give us a chance to pass those out. Okay, great. There, oh, look at that, it's warming up. Okay, so what happened is, when we had our, on the Fourth of November, when we had our attack, we got 13 different items that the council asked the staff to look at, and so what we did was, we went out, and I passed these out to you before in an email, and so you all would have seen these before, and there was a staff memo attached to each one of these that the department heads gave to us, so we looked at each one of these things. And the problem is, some of them, there's no money that's going to be really associated with them. It's a good idea, and we appreciated looking at it, but there's not anything that's going to come out that's going to help us on a $2.9 million budget. And I'll give you an example of that. The police training facility, which is a firing range out east of town, we put no impact on that, and the reason is, we have agreements with the county and with the town that they use a facility, and they pay us about $8,500 each year for it. We use that $1,600 for maintaining the facility, so we're not getting any more money out of that. If we could get some other small towns, maybe, to come and use it, we might get some, but if you get $4,000 from Lincoln and $1,000 from Wanda or something like that, it isn't going to help you much in that $2.9 million budget. Now, there are some of these, however, that do amount to a lot, and I'll point out one that is very interesting, parking. Russ Waller gave that presentation to you a couple of weeks ago, when we automated the parking deck. So if we automate the parking deck, we no longer have the people that are working there. They are out on the streets enforcing parking, and the parking deck now is automated, so we can run that 24 hours a day and increase the revenue by a significant amount. But wait a minute, we also said, maybe we don't want to run it 24 hours a day, because maybe you want to have some free parking. So that I give you up there for a number, but Scott, take $400,000 off of that for me. Okay, so you take $400,000 off of that. Now, at the bottom, of course, you now don't have enough money to help balance that $2.9 million deficit. So this is what we call the council interactive budget game. You can just keep moving those things around the way you want. Okay, Scott, if you'll put that back the way it was. And now, we've got another slide behind that. Let's take a look at that. Now, we did the same thing here, and we passed that slide out. Okay, thank you. What we did is we drew some arrows there, and that is, some of these deficits that we've got in the $2.9 million, maybe we can use some of these things to address the deficit. And you know, one of the bugaboo's we've had a lot is solid waste. That's a big chunk of it, and if we wanted to take that one up, maybe what that would do is that would take care of a couple of those big costs that we've got, or maybe not. If you want to take that off of there, then you have to find some other sources of revenue. So what other sources of revenue might there be? Now, since we've got this all up on one screen, let me show you what you could do. You could now go back to this slide, and you could take something like motor fuel tax, and you could draw that arrow all the way over to here, and you can offset that deficit by some other new sources of revenue, if that is what you would like to do. Or you could remove some programs over there to thus create a long-term gain. Now, I want to show you one other possibility here, and this is the chart that I don't like very much. Would you give me that chart number three? Which one do we got down there?
14.
Yeah, the other options. Could you pass that out again? Okay, here's the other options, and what I'm going to do on this slide is I'm going to recommend that you don't look at this again, but I want to put it out there in the spirit of full disclosure. One of the things you could tell me to do is, okay, $2.9 million in a $100 million budget is only 2.9%. You've got those department heads sitting behind you. I just see every one of you cut your budget 2.9%. That's the across-the-board cut. Okay, then we dust off our hands and said we did a good day's work, we tried to balance the budget, and we walk away. The reason that I would recommend not doing that is twofold. One, you can't do that forever. I mean, you do that this year, and you do that the next year, you do that the next year, and what happens is, the departments keep being cut more and more and more, and we have not moved out any programs, and we haven't created any revenue. You can't do that forever. As a stopgap measure, if you wanted to do it one time, okay, but you can't get in the habit of doing that. The other reason I would recommend against that is because, in essence, what that does is you are then abrogating your responsibility. Instead of the council deciding what programs you're going to move out and what things you're going to emphasize, you've asked the department heads to do it, you're letting them run the budget, and I think that what we want to do is, we want to get the guidance from you, and then we will execute that desire that you want. So for those two reasons, I'm against the cross-the-board cut, but we can do that if we needed to do that. The second thing up there is our fund balance. General fund is at $15 million. That is 15% of our general fund total. You could always eat into that to try to balance the budget. If you want to take $2.9 million out of that, that's a way of doing it, and I'm going to ask Patty Lynn to tell us why she doesn't want you to do that.
So the general fund reserve, I think you guys have all heard me say, is the Holy Grail, et cetera, saying, if you were to start using your savings account to pay for your regular operating costs, that's a bad sign. That means that you're choosing not to either cut an expense or raise a revenue to keep yourself sustainable, and that's a really bad sign to the credit rating agencies, so I wouldn't recommend that.
And also, the problem is, we truly have an emergency, and we have to use it. It wouldn't be there to use, and you could have a disaster that we need some money quickly, and the council could decide to use that. Okay, so Scott, I'm asking you to take that slide off and put the previous one up. Okay, so what happens then, these four slides show you in one, at one time, all together, the choices that we have to make, big picture. Now, we can drill down on that as much as you would like, and we welcome your input today or one-on-one, call me or Patty, talk amongst yourselves, and let us know what you would like to do, because in January, we're going to bring back to you what I would call a proto-budget, and that is, we'll make these kind of decisions for you, come up with a balanced budget, and then you can tell, and we'll tell you what we did to do it, and you can tell us why we shouldn't do that, and we'll move them back around until we get generally the idea that we think you want. Mr. Mann?
Just asking for some clarifications on some of the lines up there. On Exhibit 3, general tax revenue, the number drops $1,093,000. Is that on the assumption that sales tax revenue is going to continue to decline? Is that where that drop is coming from?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. On Exhibit 4, could you tell me what the number, so soft freeze is up there for $500,000?
Sure.
Soft freeze, divestiture of facilities for $50,000, and solid waste, and I'd just like to kind of get an idea of what comprise those numbers, how those feel about, like what the assumptions were.
Right, absolutely. And I think when we sent out the tactic to you some time ago, and I'll tell you what, I'm going to send it out again, and it'll have a memo associated with each one of those from the respective department heads, and you can, and then you can look at that in some detail and write notes and things on it, but let me talk about it generally. So let's talk about the soft freeze. Okay, what happens is, we have 722 full-time employees, and we have about a 5% turnover every year historically, so that's about 35 employees. So what Nicole and I would say is, well, how many of those do you have to replace? Well, we've got some we've got to replace. There's firemen, and there's policemen. We've got a director of community development we want to replace, and so let's take that 35 and say, okay, 25 of those we're going to replace. That leaves 10 that you might not replace. Let that position go vacant. And so, an average employee with benefits is about $50,000, so if you do not fill 10, you've got $500,000 you can put in there. So how do I get that? I get that the same way that I asked Jay Teslaw how you got the answer on the pool, you know? This is the best guess of the department head, in this case, human resources, that we might be able to get. And that's how we get that soft number, and it's really soft because it could go up and down based upon our actual leads from the budget. And your second item was?
Facilities line?
Yeah. That facility is $50,000, and I went out and I asked our facilities manager what we could take out of that. And I went out and I asked our facilities manager what we could take out of that to save money. And I looked at my, I looked at the number of, let's see. I thought maybe we could get $400,000 out of that, when we look at all the different properties we've got. But the problem with that, and what Russ Waller will tell you, is there's two things about it. One is, there's pieces of property that you can't sell this year and all of a sudden get money off of it, like the public safety training facilities, the fire station that we built in the southwest. Well, could you sell that and get some money off of it? Well, probably, but we don't have any buyers out there for that. And so it's a theoretical gain. And once you get it, it's a one-year gain because you get that money that year, but it isn't going to help you year after year. So what Russ did was, he went back and looked at the pieces of property they've got, and those are, are un, pieces of property that are not required for the city. And most of them, some of them are vacant, and some of them are lots that we've got. But that's about all we can get out of that. And in the memo that he prepared for you that I'll send him out to you again, he lists those pieces of property. And your third one was?
Just what assumptions went into that solid waste.
Yeah. Well, I will go to that, and it has a number of variables, and you know, we have talked about that a lot. But what this would propose is you could do it in a couple of ways. One is you would just say, we're out of the business. We're not going to do it. I've got people like Allied Waste who come to me every couple of months and say, are you ready to have us take it over? And what that means is, we just get out of the business entirely, and they handle it. So that means the money that we spend, which is a deficit of about a million and a quarter, disappears. And that means a residence then pays Allied Waste for the service they get. That's one way of doing it. Another way of doing it is we could say, okay, instead of doing daily pickup of bulk and brush, we could go to a spring and a fall, like many communities do. And then that reduces the amount of money we have to spend every week on that. There's a number of ways you could do it. One factoid that we could put in our kit bag is that trash is a moneymaker. That's why they keep coming to us, to put the trash out in the bin and having the machine come and dump it in. We make money on that every year. And that is used to offset the bulk and brush. What a trash company would do, they'd love to get the trash, is they would come and pick that up, and they'd charge you $25 per bucket, and they would make money on that. And then what they would do is, they would go back and figure out how they make money on bulk and brush. They would pick that up, maybe by charging you by the pickup or by scheduling a spring and a fall. There's many models out there, and almost every city has a model different than the one we've got. But right now, it costs us about a million and a quarter every year as a deficit to do solid waste the way we do it. When I say a 1.25, how do I know that's 1.25? Jim Karch, what do you think that number's going to be?
On average, we report 1.25 million dollars.
Thank you. So that's how it comes. And if you want to take these on, you know, if you want us to look at them, we'll drill that down to give you more specificity if you have an appetite for that. Yes, ma'am?
Thinking about sources of revenue for further context, can you also provide us with information about anticipated enterprise fund increases? Just thinking about, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Taxpayer, I'm wondering if, I know that everybody's bill looks a little bit different, but is it possible to take what's on, what I refer to as our city services bill, the water bill, and think about what residents are already paying, you know, utility tax increases and solid waste, that kind of thing, so we can get that little bit bigger picture? But is there an average that somehow we can calculate and be there?
Absolutely. And that is another one that we're going to take on. Patty, write that one down, because we've talked about that, about what kind of fee increases could you have or decreases across the board? Because there are some things that are taxes that you see up here, but there are other things that are just fees that are optional, that people can pay them or not pay them. And many of them are in like parks and recreation, for example, that we don't, we're not including in this.
Well, I'm also thinking about, you know, we just raised sanitarian storm fees. So I just want to try to get a holistic picture of what is already coming out for increased revenue, for revenue sources. Also on?
Right, and we've only talked about the general fund here. Scott Rathman and I talked about the enterprise fund, all of the other funds, and we're going to put that together.
And that has more to do with the taxpayer impact.
It does.
That this is, I've heard on the radio a conversation about possibly registering businesses, and I'm wondering if we can comment on that. That's been talked about for a number of years, and I think for safety issues and so forth, and cons, and why we do it, and why we don't do it now.
Yes, that's a great question. That would have been a good example for me to use over here. When we talk about community development here, let's see, where, cost recovery here. One of the things that we've got in community development, and they recovered about 85% of their cost of doing business about 10 years ago. Today, they only recover about 45% of it. So every year, that amount of money keeps costing more and more money. So how would you do it? Well, some of the things that we would do in there, there is a theory that would say we could have an automatic increase, like every two years, the department head would look at the cost of doing business, his compensation increases. And then, absent counsel argument to the contrary, some of those fees could be raised. And one of the things that we've got in there is, we do not have a business registration system. There are some, for example, liquor establishments have to get a liquor license. We have a process for that. But if someone like the Chamber of Commerce comes and says, how many kinds of businesses do you have in town that does X, Y, or Z? Our answer is, we don't know. And sometimes, the only way we find out about that is there's a complaint, and we've gone in, for example, and done fire inspections at a business that we didn't know that the business ever existed. So it is a public safety issue, and it's not really a revenue driver. But what happens is, if we had a system whereby we registered all the businesses in town, we could get a fee that would pay for some of those inspections, and from a public safety point of view, we would be able to go to all of those places, and they'd be inspected every couple of years or something. We'd know what they are. When I put that number of $225,000 up there, again, I asked the community development director, me, what that number would be. And that's the number we came up with. So, you know, we put some, we put some fun thought into that for, you know, the business registration, that sort of thing. But yes, that is an unrecovered source that we haven't addressed, and I think we should take that one on. Mr. Sage?
Steve, a question about one specific entry, a general question about the kind of feedback that you're looking for from the council. Because I just want to make sure I'm clear. I think on one of the slides, we saw around golf courses, there was no impact. So I want to be sure I understand what that means. I don't necessarily want to get into the detail of operating versus capital versus whatever. Does that suggest that there is no anticipated or planned general fund transfer to the golf enterprise fund?
Yes. Now, you know, who can foretell the future as my friend Yogi Berra always says, predictions are tough, especially when they're about the future. But I'll make that prediction that says yes, and the reason, yes, did you have?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, the chance of a tattishack golf course explosion is after, yeah. That would stand, I'm talking about.
Yeah.
And then the second thing was, when you're looking for some feedback from a council, can you tell me what, I mean, rather than just saying, we want feedback from a council, are you going to specifically ask for some feedback? And let me give you an example. Would you be in favor of 50% in order to close the deficit, a 50% cuts versus 50% revenues? What level of feedback? Because otherwise, we're just going to have this spattering of feedback, right?
Sure. And let me go back and answer those two questions. I'll give you the first one. And we did put over here golf. And here. No impact. And the reason for that is that we could make the golf course right now run at a break-even point. Now, there's an issue about, we'd like to get another $30,000 a year out of Prairie Vista for reasons that we know. But let's say we've got that, and we're running all of those golf courses to full capacity. They can break even. Less improvements, capital improvements. And we have a number of golf groups that say, we would like to set up a business where we will, a charity, a donation, where we will pay for the improvements. If we want this improved, we'll improve that. So we think we can do that. The problem is, though, if you wanted to sell a golf course, and that's the way we talked about it a couple of years ago, and I think then that discussion came up, and selling a golf course came off the table. But it comes back to like the old Fire Station Five. You don't know who would want to buy a golf course between now and April, when we have to do this budget. And when you do that, you sell it once, and that doesn't help your budget on an ongoing basis. So that's why we think it would be a zero impact to that.
Okay, so I thought I heard your backpedal just a little bit on the delineation between operating and capital cost for the golf course. The question, when you say it will break even, you mean on an operational level?
On, yes.
What I'm seeking understanding of is, when I say breaking even, that means the total cost of the golf course, I don't care if it's operational or capital or any other type of expenditure, does that mean that it is anticipated that the golf courses will not require, I don't care what it's for, that the golf courses will not require any transfer from outside of their enterprise fund?
Yes, that is what we're going to try to do. And for capital improvements, that will come from private donations.
Okay, because that is a tremendous achievement.
It is.
You know, and a noteworthy achievement. And so I think it's important to highlight that because that's a major step forward. You know, so I say, kudos, you know, to Jay and his golf course team for doing that. Is that significant?
Yes, thank you. And now, you have the second question I would like to answer, and that is about feedback. Between now and December, or between now and January, we do that, we'll take feedback in any way that we can get it. You can call me, you can call Patty Lynn, you can call the department head. And what we'd like to do is have stuff like, say, I, Dave Sage, and categorically oppose any property tax increase. Okay, we'll put that down. We know that that's probably the way that vote's going to go, and maybe that's not one we're going to address. So when we come back to you, then we'll have some idea of what kind of revenue and expenditures we're going to do. If Karen comes back and says, boy, I really like that property registration issue, that business registration issue, well, that gives some input that there may be some merit in that, and maybe we can keep that $225,000 up there as a source of revenue. That's the kind of information we'd like to get back.
So, and that's, I think, very helpful, Steve. Could I ask, is it possible just to send us a spreadsheet then that says, for instance, that has the revenue sources listed, are you supportive of this? Yes or no? You know, and perhaps then some feedback on, you know, maybe some prioritization of the potential capital project.
I?
If you give us that kind of information, you're going to get more consistent, reliable feedback.
I don't think I can do that. And the reason is, then we violate the open meetings law because we're having some private ballots. I did that very thing one time in a previous jurisdiction, and I just got the crap beat out of me. And so like the pirate in the Caribbean says, I'll not be making that mistake again. So what I will do is, you have your notes there, and you can write any notes on that and hand them to us one at a time, then we get that input. I just, I just can't, we just can't have a vote in private. I can't get, I can't send a ballot out to you to mark on.
There has to be some other way to do that, Steve. There has to be some way to gain feedback individually from a council and not have concerns about the meeting.
Right. I think you can give me your notes on this or other notes, and I can do that. But I believe that we'll have to bring this back for a discussion with everybody in open session.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, what I thought you had as a basis for that conversation in January, so you have short, I have some framework to build that conversation on.
There's a lot of merit to that. I'd love to do that. And I'll take that on, and we'll do as much as we can do with that. I'll get with our city clerk and the city attorney. We'll see what we can get out for you. Maybe a questionnaire of some kind that we could get out. I'll try that. And I think Jamie was first.
Just on the golf question, I just had a follow-up clarification of what David was asking. So you mean, like, you said you've had residents reach out to you. We, as an example, we've got the Zoological Society that helps us with projects at the zoos. Now, we're going to have a Bloomington Golf Society or some sort that wants to help with capital improvements for the courses?
Yes, they have a name, and we've met with them a couple of times, and we'll certainly resurrect that.
They came to the mayor's open houses about two years ago, just right after the budget task force completed its work, and they kept coming to the mayor's open houses. And I would say about two months in, someone said, well, how about if we try to take care of some of this? And we tried to take care of some of that. And that morphed into a situation where it was very similar, as you mentioned, Zoological Society, where they would try to raise money, take care of some, if not possibly all, the happenstance of our capital costs at the golf courses.
I see Jim shaking his head no back there. My point is, I'm not giving up on that one. Yeah?
That group has not formalized at all. There have been some golfers who have come forward and said they were willing to help, but they have not formalized. They haven't started any 501(c)(3) stuff. They're a long way off from there. There are golfers who want to help raise a substantial amount.
So essentially, we need to nudge, nag in order to get them, we may not need that this fiscal year, '19, but we're going to probably need 20 moving forward, so we need to get out.
Yes, sir. And Karen?
Could you clarify on 2.1, the library expansion is tied to property tax revenue? That is a C property tax, or are we talking about a library levy increase that is over about the one we, the middle one we just approved? Is that correct?
Yes, that is a difficult issue, and I don't know how that could sort it out. I've talked to Alex Cardona, who was here today, about how we might put that in there. Patty, if the library needed money like that, does the city then bond for it, or does the library have bonding authority themselves?
I'd have to check. I think either way, it would be on the library tax levy.
It would be through the library levy.
Yes.
Not necessarily the city.
Yes, unless we wanted to donate some other revenue, but property tax would be there that way.
And that was a, just an example for one illustration.
Oh, yes, yes.
Of an annual payment on a bond, a million dollars a year on bond.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to just stress again that this is just for demonstrative purposes, it's a discussion. It's a discussion. Some of these numbers are soft, as Steve has said. So it's just to kind of get everybody's imaginations or options going, and we can always get down into more detail.
Sure. If the council decided that they wanted to move forward and help with a library expansion initiative, those are kind of the numbers you'd be looking at.
Except that, as we've said, I believe Old Smith was trying to consider, went on, that would be bonded, possibly bonded with the library rather than this of the city.
I'm not sure about that. I'm not sure if the library has bond authority or not, but either way, the revenue source would come off of their levy.
Come off their levy.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, I have four slides, and you see them there, and you have them in front of you. And Scott, you had one more question?
Sorry. Well, first of all, thank you for this presentation. This is a different way that we've looked at this in years past, and it's, I think it creates really some clarity about what we're talking about. And I just keep thinking to myself, some of these products that we see here, we see them as cost, but we don't potentially, it's almost impossible to capture the whole gain that comes from some of these projects. So, you know, whether it be Hamilton-Bund Commerce, that potentially would generate more business, which would generate property tax revenue, building some of these gaps. So I'm trying to think about this in a more dynamic, long-term way. I guess my question would be, since we've done it this way, and we've talked a bit about scheduling for feedback and the next steps, what, are we going to be seeing a timeline that's going to walk us through that protocol you talked about, you know, some feedback? Feedback from my colleagues, I love hearing what their thoughts are. Because I have some ideas, just kind of programmatically, of questions that I have that may not be ready for public consumption, because we don't know what we don't know until we ask these questions. But I don't want those conversations to duplicate staff work if we all have kind of similar ones. Or my question being, how will we create where we are now versus the final budget, budget vote, committee vote?
Well, ultimately, the product at the end of all of this is going to be the same kind of a budget that you've seen before. We're not changing that budget process. What I'm trying to do is get council input so that we can build that budget based on your priorities. This is your budget, it's not the staff's budget. We have a schedule about when we're going to do those things, and I'll get with the finance department, and we'll get more clarification on that schedule about when we can begin to bring these things back to you and get your input on it. Because before we turn the, all of the people in the finance department have the green eye shades and those, before we turn them loose to do all of that, we want to know what it is that you want us to put into. And when we have that, then we'll turn them loose and do it. And I want to make sure that before Patty Lynn begins doing that final budget, we're putting into there the priorities that you want. And that will get, that's got to be a January, February kind of a thing.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess my follow-up piece would be that, since we're doing this so differently than years past, I'm thinking about how we've done the budget cycles in previous years. Usually have a Saturday meeting, and then we have a meeting where we talk about it, and then a work session in the subsequent meeting. Perhaps we're going to reevaluate if that's still the same model that we want to be using, given our new process we're looking at this. If it means maybe a few more work sessions, instead of a Saturday meeting, or if it means, you know, smaller group meetings or whatever that looks like, I don't feel like we're, we should be beholden to what we've done in the past, considering this is such a different approach in a positive way.
Right. I would agree. I would say like, for example, again, this is the, this is the cost side of the ledger. So the aquatic center, for example, is going to generate something and some additional increment of new revenue, but we don't know what that might be. So if it were to generate, let's say, two-hundred-and-three-thousand dollars, then the annual cost might not be six-hundred-thousand dollars. It might be three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, or whatever the dollar amount might be. So some, these are not, some of them, like Hamilton-Bund Commerce, would be very, very difficult to project. Some of these might be a little easier to project, like an aquatic center or something like that, that would be absent tangible, and we could, just like concessions, begin to have some kind of concern projected as well, of revenue coming back to us if we went down that path. If that makes sense?
Yes, exactly. And as we get closer to finalizing this, I think, Scott, we'll see some of what you see. We'll have a Saturday budget meeting, and we'll do some of that stuff as we get closer to finalizing.
We're thinking some of what Scott was saying is, are there other ways? Maybe we still have Saturday, but can we have others? How do we organize that? If you've got ideas about how to communicate that to me, Steve, Patty Lynn, and then meet people all, try to figure out a way to do this. I think this is helping to lay out a clearer picture. Thank you, Steve, by the way, and Patty Lynn, and everybody else involved in this, because this helps clarify for us, and we are December 20th. And so I think we've got the clear picture of challenges ahead of us over the next four-plus months than we've had in a while. So I like the way that, I mean, it'd be nice for you to tell us that we had a balanced budget that was being projected, our sales revenues, you know, sales tax, others were up. We've had a surplus coming, but given that we know we have tough choices, this begins to help clarify where those tough choices are going to have to come from, and as I think that whole, Sage is suggesting, a combination perhaps of butts, as well as maybe user fee increase to whatever it might be.
Well, I will close by saying that this is not an insurmountable obstacle here. As further, years go on, and it becomes, it looks more and more difficult, it might be a problem. But that's why this year, if we can make some strides towards doing some program adjustments like we've been doing in our priority-based budgeting, if you can do those things, those things help you for the years to come, and that is an advantage.
Actually, you have one question that I was asked, and I wasn't sure the answer. I knew it, I think, within plus or minus one year of the, of our aggressive pension policy that we passed at the end of 2013. And we started that with fiscal '15. And so we've had '15, '16, '17, '18. Do we, do we have two years more, or is it three years more of really steep increases that we put into pension policy?
I think we're there. It does go up every year still.
It goes up, but the figures went down to under a million dollars at some point?
We phased in, and so every year, there's new data. If you remember last year, April 30th, the stock market was down. That forced our contribution up more. This last April 30th, things are way up. So it's reduced somewhat. But we still have an increase every year, just based on payroll.
There was a curve in your pattern. I think there was six years, if I'm not mistaken, that we had the steepest increases. And then they started to level off some. How far away are we from that leveling off?
I think we're at the part where we're plateaued. There'll be incremental increases going forward, but the plan is still very much on track.
Thank you very much. Other question? Yes, Scott? I want to... You were just resting your hand there for great, just right, rather than retreat. Okay. Anyway, thank you all. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the DCPA staff. Thank you, Dave, for having to, and helping to host us. Thank you, public health, everyone in the public, for coming. We certainly appreciate your ideas and input. And tonight, I do have my last town hall meeting, and that's in O'Leary Park, around 5:30 to 7:00. And you're all certainly welcome. And at this point, unless there's any other business, I would be very happy to entertain a question to Jared. Moved by Alton Black, is there a second? Second by Alton Smith. Alton, if you can, if I say aye?
Aye.
Close. Return. Thank you very much.